We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Regular Meeting for tonight, which is Monday, July 3rd, the day before the 4th of July 2023. And we'll have our invocation by Reverend Dr. Francisco Exar Artley of the Poswille United Methodist Church. After that, we'll have our Mayor Pearl Tim lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. As we prepare tomorrow to celebrate Independence and our freedom that we cherish so much, let us never forget that the freedom that Christ gave us when He died on the cross for our sins, the freedom that we can celebrate every day, the freedom of hate, the freedom of prejudice, animosity towards others, anger, all of that, Jesus gives us that. He's freed us from all that. We just have to accept it. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, I thank you for this beautiful day, Lord. I thank you for this City Council. I thank you for our mayor and our staff. I ask some, Lord, that you bless them, that you give them the wisdom and guidance they need to make decisions for our city. This is a wonderful city, Lord. We just need to accept it, embrace it, and want to just be here to enjoy it. And I thank you for the work they do for us. And, Lord, I thank you for those that are here, and I ask that you bless them as they travel their separate ways after the meeting. And, Lord, just be with us tomorrow as we celebrate our Independence Day. And we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Mayor Pearl Tim, we appreciate the pledge. And Pastor Francisco, we thank you so much for the prayer, reminding us about the freedoms that we have as individuals and citizens in this country. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a council meeting where action will be taken tonight on the items that were discussed at our legislative work session last Thursday. And so it'll go a little bit differently than it did last week, as we will not go into full discussion unless we have new material to bring via those items. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Items, comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. There are just a few, again, protocol issues I'd like to go over with us this evening, and then we'll get right into the meat of the meeting. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning if you do that, and then the second deviation will, from that requirement, we will turn your microphone off and for you to not continue to discuss if you're attacking a person with your words. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or speak from the audience or react to the speakers, cheer, or carry on a conversation while you're at the microphone and the podium. We ask that you would direct your comments and concerns to the chair and then respond to any questions that may come from the elected officials. We're only required to accept public comments during the public hearing portion, and if you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting, so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the Agenda Items will be handled this evening. The committee chairperson will read the Agenda Item, then that person, a representative, or the Agenda Item will come forward, make your presentation, and then we will go ahead and vote as we received the information on our legislative work session last Thursday. Myself and council members are possibly asked clarifying questions if you bring more information, or if we had additional concerns or comments as it relates to that particular item. Only, there are 20 minutes for individuals to speak in favor of an item, and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, we ask that you would please, we'll have filled out an informational card that gives us your name, address, and for the record, and you would come to the podium and give your name and address, and hand the card to our city clerk, Ms. Vicky Acker, to my right. This is not a question-and-answer or debate format. It's just here for us to hear the information and make our decisions. And again, please address all your comments to the chair, and if you have anything that's printed and you'd like to give that to us, please feel free to give it to our city clerk. She will make copies and pass those copies out to myself and council members. Those are all the rules for the meeting, and we will get into the meeting. If you'd like to have a paper copy, there are copies outside on the desk, but if not, you can follow us on the screen that's above me. It's raining. Okay, so we'll move on. Now, we have Food Truck Mondays out there. We don't have any announcements or presentations outside of the instructions that I've given, so we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I will open the floor for a motion. Oh, I apologize. Oh, okay, it's not on mine. Yes, sir. We do have something. I apologize. It's not on this one. I will get a different agenda, and it's the one that's printed. We have an update from the tax assessor on the tax assessment notices. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pearl Tim.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Karen Callen, Finance Director, 6695 Church Street. At last Thursday's meeting, at the end of the meeting, you had about three or four of your constituents come up and ask about the 2023 assessment notices that went out. Mr. Balfour, who is the chief appraiser for the county, is here to speak on that. I know he's got an appointment, so I totally try to get him in and out, so he'll come down and come up to the podium.
Oh, great. And the tax commissioner, hey, Mr. Baker, you can come on to the front, too.
Yes, and Mr. Tax Commissioner is here, too.
And the assessor, welcome to our City Council meeting. We appreciate you taking time to come this evening. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Steve Balfour. I'm the chief appraiser, Douglas County.
Yes, sir.
And I am here just to update the commission on recent activities on the assessment notices. We have close to 54,000 parcels in Douglas County, and we sent the notices out on June 23rd, all parcels. We currently are using a new appraisal system. This is our first year using that system. Few of the parcels, homestead parcels. So, we have 54,000 parcels. We have approximately 25,000 parcels that receive homestead or has homestead application or some form of exemption, senior citizens, veterans over 65, et cetera, et cetera. So, we found that close to about 15,000 parcels had incorrect, after the notices were sent out, incorrect estimates on the exemptions. I want to say that our assessment notices are correct. Our values are what we want them to be, and our assessment notices were sent out so that taxpayers can appeal their values. I'm the chief appraiser. We put values on property. It so happens that the Department of Revenue has guidelines. They ask us to put also a breakdown of what your tax values may look like in the event that this is the tax bill. Our assessment notice is not a bill. It's a notice of assessed values. So, we had some errors on, there was a glitch with the reports. We do run reports to get the notices out, and the batch report that was done pulled erroneous data for the exemptions. That was not the same for inside our system. So, we found out on Monday, notices went out the Friday. They were mailed on the Friday. The Monday, we found out. And since then, we got Tyler Technologies to come in. We generated new notices. In the abundance of caution, we redid all notices that received homesteads. So, we have 25,000 parcels that received homestead. We sent out new notices, and those will be sent out on July 7th, and there will be a new date, new 45 days to appeal these parcels. So, that's where we are with these notices. We sent out 52,000, about 52,000 real parcel. We have 2,500 commercial properties, and we sent out 2,015 personal property notices.
Okay. Mr. Appraiser, so, thank you so much for the explanation. Are these in the city limit, or this is totality in Douglas County?
Total, total county, within and without.
The city and the county?
That's correct.
So, you have not extrapolated the information just for city parcels?
No, I do not have that estimate. When we are doing the digest, myself and Mr. Baker, we work on the digest together. So, once we get the digest together, we'll have the breakout of the municipalities.
Okay. And so, if someone were, if someone wanted to appeal, we've gotten calls to the city.
Right.
So, if someone wanted to appeal, that 45 days will not start until you all send those new updated information out on the next Monday, the 7th of July, and they'll have 45 days from that time, rather than when they receive?
Correct. For all homestead properties, yes. And all the new notices will come out, and they will say corrected notices.
Yes.
So, it will be labeled.
So, okay, so I will open the floor up for council members. Now, my property, that's the 40% in a year. I'm just gonna, I'm not, okay, move on. Councilmember Estes. That's a big jump, though. Okay. Councilman Estes, we'll let you ask questions.
I've got a couple of concerns. I just received my notice a couple of days ago. And number one, the assessed value went up by significantly more than 50% in one year, which seems crazy. I wish my house was worth what you all say it's worth. So, I questioned the actual valuations, number one, and I have heard that from dozens upon dozens of people so far that have the same concern. My other concern is that on this notice, I mean, I have aged out of the school taxes, and yet they reappear on my notice for this year. What's happening there?
So, I'll deal with the last concern first. That's as a result of the glitch. So, that's fixed. It was correct in the system. We do have it updated on the notices that will be mailed out, and all those are corrected.
Okay.
Regarding values, I am guided by the state requirements. There are statutory guidelines that facilitate how we operate. So, the Department for Revenue has three criteria that must be met. We are, we have a sales ratio that must be met. So, the market is what determines the values, and the buyers and sellers who operate at arm's length determine what we use. So, the Department of Revenue says that our sales ratio on properties sold the previous year should be between 90% and 110% of the sales price. And the ideal ratio is 95% of the sale price. So, when I say the ideal ratio, the ideal ratio is the ratio at which the county will be able to maximize their revenues as a result of the utilities. If our ratio, which is graded by the Department of Revenue audit, is at 95% or above, we can collect on 100% of our utilities. If it's lower than 95%, we cannot. If it's within 90 and 110, we are okay. The state will approve the tax commissioner to go ahead and collect on the digest without needing to have a court hearing to get to collect the digest. So, we have these guidelines that we are guided by. So, the market was very vibrant. We had a lot of sales to justify our values, and we need to be within those ratios. And the second criteria is what is called the coefficient of dispersion, which means we need to be uniform across all the commercial residential properties. So, the COD, coefficient of dispersion, for residential properties, it states that we should be within 15% on either side of the sale price. So, we don't have a wide margin of error. So, we can be uniform, and for commercial, it's 20%. And the last criteria is for us to show no bias, and that's called the PRD, and price-related differential. And we are, the PRD should be one. So, at the end of the day, it may look like a large increase, and for some, it is a large increase. We are required to reappraise when the market says to reappraise. And if we are, if our ratios were at 60%, we need to come within the 95 percentile. So, whenever reappraisal is done, it will look like we have a large increase. The good thing is, all residents, taxpayers, they do have the right to appeal, and this is why the notices go out. And there's a 45-day window. So, I even brought some appeal forms. We, here with me, I have appeal forms. We're happy to review the appeals, and we do mass appraisal. So, we're not trying to get taxpayers. We are within a margin of error. There is a range of values. We'll go into a subdivision, and you have lower type houses, higher type houses. So, we look at the subdivision as a whole. We are mass appraisers. We are not fee appraisers. So, some homes will be valid by a fee appraiser when they look at the details, the type of carpet, type of flooring, et cetera, et cetera. That's more detailed than we go. Most of our fee appraisers, they look at the outside. We measure from the outside. So, we will get some wrong. We will have unfinished basement when there is a finished basement. We do not see the inside. So, feel free, appeal. We want to correct it. We want to get the data right. But what I do know is, we have some bad data on the houses out there, and we want to get it right. So, appeals are one way of us getting it right. Building permits are another way, and sales are another way. So, we use the data to update our information. Hope I answered your question.
Okay, so, first thing, if I have an error, like with the school taxes, on my notice, I am going to be seeing another notice?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I don't need to worry about the appeals deadline date on the first notice?
No, no. You're gonna see, all parcels, with the abundance of caution, we resent all homestead parcels. All parcels that receive homestead was redone.
Okay, then, number two, which is two parts. Number one, I want one of those forms. And number two, I hope you are well-staffed, because you are going to be looking at an astronomical number of appeals, from what I'm hearing from residents. So, prepare yourself. All right, that's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes.
Thank you. Thanks for the heads up.
Councilman Adams, do you have anything? Dr. Burdanley?
Yes, thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate the explanation.
Thank you. Mayor Pearl Tim?
What he said.
Okay. Councilman Adams?
Thank you. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here. You said that the reappraisal process was carried out as the market dictated?
Yes.
So, there's no set timeframe then as to how often the county digest is reappraised? Or is it reappraised just randomly? What does it mean by "as the market dictates"?
We are, the statutory deadline is that we are required to do, review each parcel at least once every three years.
Okay.
Right.
So, in three years' time, some of the parcels then have not been reappraised in three years, and therefore, if they're seeing a 30% or 40% or 50% increase, that's actually three to four years cumulative that they have, that is being covered?
That's correct. That's correct.
I'll ask a historical question, only for the benefit of the city and our staff in preparing our millage rate for the city. Is there any way, and I know we've probably talked about this, Mr. Baker, because I've been on the council 12 years, and it seems like every year, we're right down to the wire in receiving the digest, is there not a way that we can have the digest received by the city staff earlier, so that it's not such a squeeze on getting our millage rate set?
Work in progress. I must say that this is the first year we are using Tyler Technologies. Last year was the beginning of the transition. So, last year, we sent the notices out using WinGap, and we said, we did the digest on Tyler. This year, it's the first year we're sending the notices out on Tyler, as well as doing the digest on Tyler.
Okay.
So, we now have an integrated system between myself and the tax commissioner's office. It makes things much easier to balance. We now have the same database. So, it is our intention to get the assessment notices out earlier, as well as getting it to the board. So, this, it was in our plan. It's something that we had discussed.
Okay.
But it's a lot going on in terms of staffing, et cetera, et cetera. So, this year was not the year. But we had very good intentions to get it to you early.
Last question. You said there were some 25 parcels, 25,000 parcels in the community that were homestead exemption?
Correct. That receives homestead, in some shape or form.
So, how were only 15,000 parcels affected if the homestead is on 25,000? How did only 15 become affected?
There was, there was a glitch that was blatantly obvious on 15,000, and we discovered that this is how, this is why we reached out. For example, there were people receiving the school exemption that are now, and those were the ones that were brought to our attention on day one.
So, let me make it clear, then. You are sending out new assessment notices to every parcel, 55,000?
No, for all parcels that receive homestead. The glitch was with homestead exemptions.
Okay, just homestead?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Councilman Miller in?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any questions for you at this time. Just wanted to thank you guys for coming in to go over this with us. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Watts?
So, sorry, just to clarify, to piggyback on Councilman Adams, so, out of the 25,000 home, receive homestead, only about 15,000 had the errors in the assessment?
That is correct.
And the errors were specifically the school tax was added, or was it other things?
It was specifically with veterans and seniors. So, in the abundance of caution, I don't want to have any, so I said, let's redo all homestead properties.
So, the errors were not in an overestimation of value. It was more of the seniors?
Exemptions, yes, correct.
Thank you.
That is correct.
Thank you for coming in today. Thank you for coming in today, thank you.
Sorry, Greg Baker, 6200 Fibon Road. And also, remember, on the tax bill this year, some people will get that extra $18,000 that the governor put in this year. So, you will get that exemption this year on some of the homes also. So, just remember that when the citizens call you, because that goes through on this tax bill also. So, just...
This year only?
This year only. So, it's a one-time exemption of 18,000. So, you get that other exemption. So, those that got high exemptions will probably go down a little bit with that 18,000 the governor put in this year.
Madam Mayor, can I ask another question?
Yes, sir, I was gonna ask.
Then, Mr. Baker, how do, how do you know whether or not you received an additional $18,000 exemption or not?
Well, it'll be on, it should be on his assessment notice, is it, or is it not? It'll be on my tax bill. It won't be on his assessment notice, but when we do the tax bill, we're preparing that right now. We ran a test run this, today, of our tax bill digest, and we will be doing that until we get to run ours. Ours goes out on September 1st. So, right now, we're in the process of making sure those, that 18,000 are in the bills that are due to get that exemption.
How do you qualify for that exemption?
Say that again?
How do you qualify for that exemption?
It's automatic. The state put it in. The legislator voted in, and the governor signed it.
So, so every parcel receives that?
I'm not sure yet. Everybody that, we're still working through it, let's put it that way. All the tax commissioners through the state are working through this. We all get emails day. I will come back and give you an update as soon as we're done with it. This is the first day that we got all the information from the state, so that's why we ran a test run of it. So, we'll have more information, but I wanted to mention that, because most people don't know they get that ex, 18,000. I believe it's for everybody.
It's a homestead exemption.
Exemption.
So, it would affect homestead people, I'm thinking.
Homestead, whoever has a homestead on there. So, but I will come back and let you know. But this is the first day that we got it from the state, but there's an $18,000 exemption. So, some of those that got higher tax bills, will get that $18,000 exemption also. Thank you.
Commissioner Baker, I did have a couple of questions to follow, if you don't mind, and Estes, Estes is running, he was like, she didn't call me. So, for the criteria, to meet the criteria for the age exemption for school, for the school tax, to help homestead, what is that?
65.
And do you all know everyone's birthday automatically, so you'll just take it off, or do you have to request it?
Well, we don't know everybody's birthday exactly. You gotta come in and apply for it.
So, you have to apply?
Yes.
So, for Councilman Estes, we would never know that he, you know, met that requirement, but he did request it?
He knew to come in and apply for it.
Okay.
So, and we try to put out the information on the bill.
So, you apply every year?
Yeah, no, you, one time.
Oh, one time?
Once you do it, you'll get it all the time.
And it's 65?
And it's on the tax bill. It says, if you're 65, please come in and apply for an exemption. And there's some other senior exemptions you can apply for. And if you really look at your tax bill, all the information is on there.
Okay.
And you can get all the exemptions. So, don't overpay your tax bill if you just look at the exemptions that you can get.
And that's for school tax? That's for the school tax exemption?
School taxes, yeah.
And then for veterans, what's the age, or do you have to, what do you do?
Depends on where the veterans at. They get that, and if you are 100% disabled veteran with your certificate, you get another exemption. So, there's a number of exemptions that they can get also, and you have to qualify, and that's out there too, and we have forms for that also.
Okay, so just, if people watch our Facebook page and all that, they'll get this information. Mayor Protem, did you have?
Quick question, clarification. One homeowner, if it's two homeowners, is one homeowner over 65 qualified, or both have to be over 65?
One.
Just one, just making sure.
Maybe 62.
Yes, it is.
62, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, 62 is school tax?
School tax.
There's another one that's 65, too.
Okay.
That you can get. So, you get it at 62, and you get another one at 65.
And we want homeowner, okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council?
Thank you so much. We appreciate you all coming in and clarifying for us, and I thought that at our last council meeting, we were gonna put something on our social media that would kind of send people right directly to you, so if you start getting some calls from the city, or people from the city, we're not trying to bombard you, we're just trying to put them in the right direction, because we could not, you know, it isn't in our jurisdiction to help them.
No, they should come to the right place, because we want to give them the right answers, so they can get all the exemptions they can. And also, they can get, know where to get the forms from, so we're more than happy to help them. Like we said, we, we fight it, just like everybody, over budgets to get the right amount of people in.
Yes, sir.
But we got the people and staff to make sure you get what you need.
Yes, sir, thank you so much. We appreciate you all coming in and giving us some information to help.
No problem, thank you all.
Thank you so much, have a good evening. Mr. Estes needs his, his form as well.
I think that was the longest announcement presentation you've ever had.
I know, I know. So, now we'll move from those announcements and presentations, and we'll go to approval of the agenda. So, I'll open the floor for a motion to adopt, adoption of the regular meeting agenda for July 3, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes, have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes, for making the motion, and Councilman Adams or Mayor Protem for seconding. Do we have any questions, concerns, or corrections from council? If not, all of those in favor of adopting the regular meeting agenda for tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is adopted. So, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes of the June 15, 2023 legislative work session, and minutes of June 20, 2023 regular meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes, have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Adams, it's been properly moved in second to approve the minutes. Do we have any comments, concerns, any corrections from council? I don't see anyone. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item 23-268, which are the minutes, is unanimously approved. So, we'll move on to committees, and the first committee is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have one item tonight under the Economic Development Committee, and that is to adopt a resolution to approve DC Blocks Inc.'s participation in the revised 2020 tax plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chris Pumphrey, again, still most illustrious.
Still illustrious, Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. Chris Pumphrey, Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, 8512 Bowden Street, Douglasville. So, I provided some additional information, just to kind of clarify some of the questions we received the other night. One, as far as location, so we provided a location map to show its location right off of Riverside Parkway and the Riverside West Business Park. That highlighted parcel is directly adjacent to the Microsoft Data Center. The imagery is a bit old, so you can't really see the Microsoft Data Center, but the cleared pad site is adjacent to that. Additionally, we provided just some more information, just kind of further about the other two data centers that I mentioned that are moving forward without a tax incentive. So, provided the investment amounts for those and job numbers, as well as, one of the things that we don't often take into consideration is that data centers do consume a lot of electricity, and with electricity, you pay a sales tax on that electricity. So, on an, on just kind of an initial kind of annual basis, at that full 108 megawatt load, that is about a $62 million annual power bill that they pay. And so, if you take that into consideration, that's roughly 3% of sales tax that is paid on sale, local sales tax, East Bloss, Bloss, and then the law, the 1% lost, and so just, that's roughly about $2 million or so. If you take into account inflation, those numbers tend to go up over time, but just using kind of a base number of about $62 million, just on the power bills, therefore, it's about $2 million or so on the annualized 3% sales tax. So, any, that's the new information that I have, I'm not happy to answer any questions for you.
Is that Georgia Power, they'll be supplying the power?
There'll be dual power providers. They will have, part of that power is provided by Greystone, and the other part is provided by Georgia Power.
Okay. Open the floor for any additional questions, Councilman Adams.
Mr. Mayor Protem, just a quick question, will that not then affect, in a positive way, the franchise tax that we would receive a part of?
That's...
Is that a part of that calculation?
I just used the 3% of the sales tax component.
That's just sales tax, okay.
Yes.
There is another potential component, is that correct, Madam City Manager?
You are correct.
Okay, just curious about that. I don't know that that question's ever been asked. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, then I would, at this time, like to place item 23-262 in the form of a motion for approval.
Thank you so much. I have a motion to approve for the chairman, Mayor Protem, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, had dueling seconds, do we, Ms. Madam City Clerk? Councilman Estes? It's been moved by the chair, Councilmember Mayor Protem Terry Miller, and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item 23-262. Do we have any additional comments or concerns, questions from the elective officials? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-262 is unanimously approved. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That is the sole business of the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mr. Pumphrey. I will move on then to item number eight, which is Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight under Finance. Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Goodwin Mills Kwood LLC for the design development phase of the new Douglasville City Hall project. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, sir, thank you, Councilman Adams. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. As I spoke about on Thursday night, of course, this is for the design development phase for the proposed city hall. This would include a community engagement aspect of it, too, to gauge the interest to the public as well, and this would be about 2.2 million if the entire design development phase will go into effect, but that is for parts. Of course, we discussed that also on Thursday. It'd be about 15% of that price for schematic design, 15% for the design development, 50% for construction documents, and about 20% for construction administration.
And this is specifically and only for the design?
Yes, sir.
Nothing else?
Nothing else.
Not going any further?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I wanted to, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I want to point of order, I wanted to clarify, were we in agreement that this was through design development to include schematic design and, and design development, not just schematic design?
At every phase of it, so currently, for schematic design, that's the first phase. So, after the first phase, we would have to come back to Mayor and Council for you all to agree to continue on to the next phase of it. As Ms. Hampton agreed, as well, is part of this is also discussing financing for the Douglasville's proposed city hall as well.
So, we, inherent in this particular item, we are authorizing a continuation into design development with approval at the end of schematic design?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I want to make sure, I understand how the contract works, that we have to approve each phase, but I just want to make sure that we're all in the understanding, understanding that we're not giving them approval through design development with this approval, it's after the completion of schematic design. Okay.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Others? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's exciting, we'll begin to see some, some progress in that area. It's been a long time coming.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Madam Mayor, did you have any question?
No, sir.
Okay, if there are no other questions in, I would like to place item 23-244 in the form of a motion for approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, it's been properly moved in second to approve item 23-244. In addition to the conversations and questions that Mayor Protem asked, do we have any other from the elected officials? Okay, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-244 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Adams and Ms. Jackson, we appreciate you bringing that information to us. We'll move on then to item number nine, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Madam Mayor, no business tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Personnel Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have four items tonight.
Yes, sir.
I thought I was ready here. Item A, so authorize the mayor to sign an agreement, an engagement agreement with Lois Gethsenberger for continued city solicitor services, and Ms. Jordan will handle this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, this item was presented on Thursday night, and I'm happy to address any questions that council may have, but I don't have anything additional to add to the presentation from Thursday.
Any, any questions or comments from council, Mayor?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we, did we add in this, like an update for an evaluation at some point?
Yes, if you'll look at page three of the attachment under section C, there was a line added that says service delivery will be evaluated by the city's attorney and/or the court services administrator during the term of this agreement.
Okay, so I, I would just want to make sure, because you said there was nothing added, was there anything else that I, that we missed? Because it wasn't in there before, so this has been added, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And everybody's gonna have to speak up a little bit, because this rain is making me hard of hearing.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. Got that, got that schoolteacher voice going down there. Any other questions, comments?
All right, with no other questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 23-261.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Adams, it's been properly moved in second by the chair, Councilmember Watts, and second by Councilmember Adams to approve item 23-261. In addition to the comments from Councilmember Dr. Burdanley, do we have any other concerns or questions? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-261 is unanimously approved.
All right, thank you, moving on to B. Adopt an ordinance to amend sections 2-155 and 2-178 of the administration ordinance, and to enact a new section 2-156, and to amend section 18-3 of the personnel policies and procedures ordinance to provide a list of appointed employee positions, and Ms. Hampton will handle this.
Okay.
Yes, sir, as was mentioned to you all, the need to amend the organizational structure, particularly reporting to the city manager to help with staffing and organization moving forward, and there was a request to create the deputy city manager position. Your charter allows you to create any number of appointed positions that you deem necessary, so therefore, this ordinance relates to that request to add this as a list of appointed positions that you all would create.
I know this was discussed Thursday, any further discussion or questions on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I asked those, those employees that were involved, if they, they had a three-day rider decision, ask if they were still, if they were running to the door. No one left, so I'm assuming they're, they're in. Great, great idea.
That's, that's good news, yes, it is. Okay, so, I'd like to make, make a motion to adopt or approve item 23-271.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes, it's been properly moved by the chair, Councilmember Watts, and second by Councilmember Estes to approve 23-271. Do we have any concerns, questions, comments outside of what has already been said from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-271 is unanimously approved. Congratulations on the new positions that we're gonna have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item C takes us to the next step in this, to appoint Ms. Chelsea Jackson to the role of deputy city manager. I like the way that sounds. Deputy city manager for the city of Douglasville. Ms. Hampton will also handle this.
Yes, sir. As was previously discussed with you all, Ms. Jackson would move from the position of assistant city manager to the deputy city manager. And she can tell you how she's gonna do that.
Well, I think I was voluntold. Councilmember Adams said we could run out, but I decided to stay. But I just want to thank Mayor and Council. I'm excited to step into this role. Decided to continue working with Ms. Marsha Hampton, as well as Ms. Karen Callan as well, to implement some new things. So thank you so much for entrusting me with everything, all your goals and all your plans. And I look forward to continue serving the city of Douglasville.
Do you come with references?
Can you repeat that?
Do you come with references?
I do have some. I have a few.
I'll give her one. To put this in terms that I can relate to, as a coach, you love to see players develop and improve. And Ms. Jackson, you've been fantastic to watch, the improvement that you've, just everything. And you've, of course, you have a good example, but we just appreciate all that you've done so far, and we'll look forward to more. Anybody else? Yes, Councilman?
So, Ms. Jackson, you are amazing. You're awesome. You're very thorough and detailed. I just want to say that as you grow, just remember to take time for yourself. Okay? Sometimes as we get busy, we forget about ourselves, but make sure you take care of yourself.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms., I called her Ms. Chelsea Bean. We appreciate everything that you've done for us and how you assisted city manager. You've already elevated to this position, and it's just gonna be official now. And we could not do it without you. So we really appreciate all of your hard work, your exuberance and your enthusiasm in how you handle things at the city. The city manager, you all have, I guess, Batman and Robin, or whatever the Spidey sense stuff going on, that you can really feed off each other and you really support the elected body. So we appreciate everything again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Like to put this in the form of a motion to approve item 23-269.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, it's been properly moved in second to approve item 23-269. Do we have any comments or concerns as it relates to this item? We're all cheering on the inside. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-269 is unanimously approved. How about a?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Aw, he said stand.
Hey, we're gonna have to get together on these standing ovations.
I know.
How about a memo down there? All right. Item D, which is a natural progression of what we're talking about here, appoint Ms. Karen Callan to the role of assistant city manager for the city of Douglasville. And Ms. Hampton, floor is yours.
All right. So it's better when a stool is held up by three legs. So Ms. Callan represents one of those legs of the stool, so unbeknownst to probably most people, she functions in that capacity to some degree as it stands. Now, she can't relinquish her role as the CFO, unfortunately, but she does get to gain the title of assistant city manager and additional responsibility with your votes, so she will be a critical part of the city manager's office, with your blessing.
Thank you, and I am grateful for this opportunity. I look forward to continue to move the city forward and provide exemplary service to the citizens of Douglasville and my colleagues. And this is very special to me, because I am from here. I went to Stewart Middle School. Jim Steele was my principal in Stewart Middle School, and went to Lithia Springs High School. My parents met at the Tigers Den. I've heard Sam Davis talk about the Tigers Den, so it's very exciting to see.
And not to, you know, I know Director Bass is in the audience, and there's sometimes a little competition going on, but I know the, I know the finance department has done their share of winning some awards, and so we appreciate that about you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir. The mics are back on, I believe.
Okay.
Ms. Callan, I don't know what to say outside of that you're really a phenomenal person inside and out. And we appreciate everything that you've done for the city and how you're a great ambassador, uh-oh, you're a great ambassador as well. The mics are going in and out. You're a great ambassador for the city in representing the city of Douglasville. It was great to see you hold the flag this year at the annual George Municipal Association Conference in Savannah. We could not have had a better person to represent the city of Douglasville. And as Councilmember Dr. Burdanley has said, and everyone said, serving on this council, how excellent that you handle the money. That's very important. Citizens are always concerned about how their tax dollars are being spent, and we appreciate your customer service, not only from you, but from everyone in your department. And serving on council years ago, like in 2002, we had, and Mr. Dotson can attest, it was like, we were nervous about if we were gonna be able to make payroll and all of that and the chief, but you were able to weather the storm and stay with us, and we appreciate your loyalty and your commitment to the city of Douglasville. So thank you for your service. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Like to make a motion to approve item 23-270.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank, okay, second, okay. By the finance chair. So probably moved in second. Everyone wants to second to approve 23-270. Any other comments? And people have salutacris, or whatever that word is, keep going, preamble to the Constitution. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes. We're all approved. A standing ovation. Wow, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am officially over. Personnel and Organization.
Sidewalks due to the size of the front yard for some of those townhomes. Also, across the street, there's a proposed transformer and also fire hydrant, so that makes it kinda impossible for them to put sidewalks within that area. Other than that, there are sidewalks throughout the perimeter of the site, also except for the alleyways, because our code states there are no sidewalks required for the alleyways. But there are sidewalks throughout that development.
This is phase one and then phase two? So all of it will have sidewalks unless it is otherwise not, there's just not enough property for it, as far as the?
Only once, one part of Arista Drive, that's what you can see now, the townhomes that are currently erected now. If you were to go out there, there's a part in front of those townhomes, and it's due, the lack of sidewalks are due to the lack of yard, front yard, and then also what I mentioned earlier, the proposed transformer and also fire hydrant.
So out of 182 units, there would be sidewalks in front of 180?
I'll have to follow up with the, yeah, follow up with the map.
Okay.
Hmm.
Other questions, comments? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Appreciate you looking into that, Marcus, I really do. I know exactly which area you're talking about, too. It's actually about five units that don't have, because the plot across the street doesn't have sidewalk on it, and so it's, there's not, and there's not a sidewalk on that existing portion that's been built. And I do understand the idea of not having, not requiring them on alleyways. That makes perfect sense. So, but let me clarify, you're saying is our ordinance only requires sidewalks on one side of the street?
For local roads, and these private roads are considered local.
For, I'm sorry?
For only local roads, and the private roads proposed for the developments will be considered a local road.
So on new residential streets, though, you're still required to have them on both sides?
For, unless it's on a collector or arterial.
I would like us to kinda, not obviously right now, but I'd like us to revisit that idea that if we're only requiring sidewalk on one side of a street, it really doesn't sort of make sense.
Are you asking for sidewalks on both sides?
Yeah. I mean, on new developments. I mean, it'd be like, you know, I want to walk down, see a friend four doors down, I have to go across the street to walk on the sidewalk and then come back over. Doesn't really make sense.
We can prepare something for you all to discuss in the next couple of months.
Okay. I'd like to revisit that.
Can also make a comment, too, and I agree with you, Mayor Pro Tem, but also at the same time, if we can also look at our infrastructure, like Georgia is 30 years behind, unfortunately, in infrastructure as it relates to, like, the water, our piping. I'm sure our mayor can give us more comments. So as we look at that, if we can also look at, I've had a very good conversation with Gil, our WSA, so I know that you all presented some things that relates to homeowners and infrastructure, so when we're doing that, because we can build great sidewalks, great all of it, but if we don't look at the infrastructure, we're gonna be in trouble in the long run. Thank you.
Others? Outside of that issue, are there, is everything else according to plan as it is supposed to be, and everything's okay so far in phase one?
From my perspective, everything is okay thus far. We only been out to do a site inspection for some of the townhomes that are not front and sidewalks, but we're making sure that, hey, if there's a sidewalk that's proposed for these, that's supposed to front the townhomes, that a TCO would not be issued for those units.
Sure.
So I can ensure that we're doing our due diligence.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Ms. Jackson, do you have anything else to add? Was there any other issue?
No, sir. We find that, other than that, those two questions you all had, it definitely meets the requirements.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other comments or questions concerning this item? Ms. Welch, you can come forward if you'd like. We'll allow it.
Cindy Welch, 3002 Concord Way, Douglasville. I've been out there Saturday, yesterday, and today, and can't, because of July 4th, there's nobody there, so, but I have a question, because one of the things, when I went back and looked at all my notes, no more than 10% of those homes could be rented, so I'm hoping that's on the final plaque, but I haven't seen the final plaque. And then the other thing was the sidewalks. There are, and there are not sidewalks out there. And the same thing with two-car garages and one-car garage. There were supposed to be at least 86 homes with two-car garages and 96 with one-car garage. Now, the ones that they have done now, they're all one-car garages. Now, they are starting another phase, and I drove over there, and they appear to be two-car garages, but I think there's only eight of those homes. So I'm hoping when they come down around Arbor Boulevard, or whatever that street is, that those are gonna be two-car garage units. But somebody needs to make sure that that happens.
Mr. Thompson, would you come back, please? I'm going to assume, Ms. Welch, I don't know. I'm going to assume that phase one, obviously, is a different design to where they have one-car garages in phase one, but they do know that two-car garages are required in a certain number of the units. That was, I remember that on the development plan. Who will be policing that to make sure?
We've gotten several questions on this development, Councilman Adams, so Mr. Thompson and his staff are very aware. I think they've been out several times, so they're keeping monitored on how the progress is being developed, so we'll make certain to keep track of it.
It's gonna be difficult to cut the headers out and make two-car garages out of ones, so I just want to make sure we don't.
But the new homes that they are starting, and I think there's six or eight of them, and you can tell those are gonna be two-car garages.
As far as sidewalk?
So they are doing some.
As far as the sidewalks, Ms. Welch, I'm not sure at what point in construction this developer would be installing sidewalks. I have no idea. Depends upon, I would assume, when you get all the utilities ran, water, sewer, electricity, gas, to the unit, you wouldn't want to pour sidewalks prior to that.
That's true, but there are some homes that people are already living in.
I can't hear you, Mr. Thompson.
You gotta talk up.
For the homes that are currently erected now, those are homes that sidewalks are not proposed for. Does that make sense?
No, because when it was rezoned, it said sidewalks would be on all lots.
Correct. And I think, and here's what I would say, Councilman Adams, to address Ms. Welch, and I know it's not a public hearing, so we can address that after the meeting.
Okay.
That what Mr. Thompson is articulating is that the homes that Ms. Welch is addressing are those homes that the Mayor Pro Tem has been asking about, that the sidewalks are not in front of those homes. So that is the specific area that Mr. Thompson was addressing. That's not gonna be something that would continue along throughout the development as the development is built.
The majority of those homes brought out, with sidewalks on the front.
Okay. So does that?
I have one other question.
Ms. Welch, this is not a public hearing.
Okay. Well, are the streets gonna be city streets, or are they gonna be private? Because the, this, they're private? Okay. Because all the street signs are blue. Pretty blue. So.
They're private streets. They're streets. They'll be maintaining those streets. those streets.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, is there any reason why, staff, I'm asking staff, that we would not go forward with approving phase two in the face of what's going on with the development at present in phase one?
No, sir. We have sent the plat out to the Development Review Committee, that includes engineering, fire, water, sewer authority, everyone has reviewed it and given us the stamp of approval.
Okay. So this phase is ready to be approved and the issues with phase one that are not being adhered to are being addressed? Okay. Fair enough, thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay? Thank you all very much. Hearing none, then I make a motion that we approve item 23-247 with the conditions stated.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve 23-247 with the conditions that were presented and discussed. Do we have any other comments or questions, or may I have a second, please? A second to approve?
Is it going to die?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. It's been approved by, or recommended to be approved by the Chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Councilmember Watts. We've had some lengthy discussion, and we know this is just phase one for this development. Do we, all those in favor of approving with the conditions that were discussed, item 23-247, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, 23-247 is unanimously approved.
Moving on then to item B. Consider request for approval of a development plan for Vic's Tire Shop for 1.372 acres at 5621 Fairburn Road, Land Lot 52, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 00520150017 and 00520150036. Plans dated May 22nd, 2023, application by William Mark Sisk, AIA. Mr. Thompson?
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Chuck Street. I have no additional items, items to report on at this moment. Are there any additional questions or concerns?
Is Mr. Vic here tonight?
Representative?
Do you have Mr. Sisk, the design professional here?
William Sisk, 743 Mainer Terrace, Atlanta, Georgia. How may I help you tonight?
Mr. Sisk, we have several questions that have been asked, and of course, this has been a long, ongoing process. I don't know if you've been involved in the other meetings that we've had concerning this particular location. I have concerns myself about the property, the operation of the business, and then the additions being done. My biggest concern is there's been a building package lying on that property for several years now that I am assuming that the applicant is going to want to use and going to want to install as a part of these improvements.
Well, that, yeah, that is the...
My concern is, I don't, I'm not sure that the materials in that building package are still relevant to the new updated UDO that we now operate under, as far as design standards, as far as exterior facades and so forth. I'm, I'm just curious because...
Well, that's all interior structure.
I'm sorry?
All those pieces of steel that are on the site are interior structure.
So there's no metal panels that would be attached to the outside of, that's just red iron only?
No, that's the metal framing.
That's just red iron only? I just don't want it to come up at a later time, oh, we already have these and we want to use them?
Oh, no, I mean, everybody is well aware that we have to use brick or stone and limited either stucco or cementitious siding.
What, whatever is on the plan.
And that's on the elevations.
Okay.
So that structure is going to be on the inside.
Sure, the red iron would be covered.
And the siding's on the outside.
Okay, okay. I'll open the floor for any questions for the applicant, Mr. Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just, I'll reiterate what I said on Thursday, I mean, we definitely, I think, appreciate the fact that something is happening on this, on this property, that we're going to finally enclose a lot of what's being stored in the open. I would implore you as my fellow architect to do what you can on the, on the facade that faces the interstate. I know that, you know, you've got pretty far along developed plans, you still have some room for some articulation on that facade. It'd be nice if you had windows, but it's a storage facility, now you can't put windows in there, they have no purpose, but whatever you can do to further articulate that facade, because again, that's, that's the welcome to Douglasville building, basically, whether we want it to be or not, that's the first thing you see when you come off the interstate, so...
Well, there is an interplay of planes.
I'm sorry?
There's an interplay of planes, so you're going to get some layering. You have one screen wall there, you know, that faces the interstate, and the other screen wall that's not attached to that, that faces...
I know, I know you have a budget to work with, I understand that.
Okay.
Try to do...
This portion of materials for now, and once you move in, then you're going to be going back to the, to build a smaller building, is that correct?
Remodeling.
To remodel that building, once you, he gets into the larger building?
Yes, but that would be a separate permanent application altogether.
Right, I just want to make sure that we don't drag this out for another four to...
Six years.
Correct.
When I asked the civil engineer to submit an updated proposal, yeah, my original request was 2017. So, yeah, you know, it's been a while.
Well, then, then I hope you appreciate our concerns in the fact that he did not receive it. Right. Yes, sir.
Were you going to ask me anything about the court cases? All right? Go ahead.
Okay, so I, as long as we're good, then on the, on the timetables, then I'm good to report.
Construction, I mean, construction industry is still feeling the effects of COVID. I hesitate to limit my time to a deadline to get something finished.
Thank you.
But then when I destroy something, I can see that the deadline can finish, don't I can't guarantee you can leave that.
Well, that is my concern right there then, because this is, when you come off a by twenty, this is exactly what we're going to see, and what we've been seeing for as long as I can remember now is not anything that we want to reflect our city. And I understand that he's trying to work with you, that he's trying to work with the city to get this cleaned up, but COVID in the building industry is not a good enough reason to not get the project finished.
Can I make a comment as well? Yeah, yeah. I, I want to make a comment as well. Councilman Miller, your comment is, as far as timeline, is awesome. Let me back up, I want to say that if we're going to do this, then I want to make sure that we look at all the other entities that have been built, that the timelines, because there are some things in our war that the timelines still haven't. So I agree with you, as it relates to construction, is that I have a project going on right now at my house and it's raining, so it's going to delay like another 10 days. So I just want to say that we make sure we set a good precedence in what we're stating and that we be very careful that what we're doing and we don't get into something in conflict.
Yes, it's to be fair across the board.
That's right. A construction per se? I just wanted to see what you're saying, because there's a six-month in there, if it's not completed, you go back and, and complete your application.
Construction, yeah, construction permit has a time.
Yeah, so I just wanted, what is the specific, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the specific.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm really getting at is that I want to make sure that this project does get finished.
Sure.
It's not just a way to get it out of the course.
Right, and that's why we have our staff to make sure that it is on a deadline and they do what they're supposed to, and so, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Because there have been things that have happened in the past that have not been completed, I don't think we're saying the same, okay?
So we'll just go with what the permit says, and we can't put any extra stipulations on anyone else who has to be across the board, whatever our ordinance says, say.
Others? Anyone else? So, Mr. Thompson, the plat, the plan, the request for the development plan is within the scope of our requirements? Do you have any conditions, special conditions that you would want placed on it?
Just two conditions.
So these would need to be received prior to the development plan?
Just the last, just prior to the issue, the issue itself, you announced that's current, but we are both, both prior to the issue.
Okay, do we, do we have those conditions? Do I, do I need to state those conditions again in my motion? Okay, so, one is approval of the DOT entry, driveway entry? And second is? Okay. Any question or comments anywhere?
Yes, sir, you're going to, you're going to state it, because I didn't really hear, I didn't kind of understand, I know one you're saying is about the G dot driveway.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Estes?
Just wanted to say those conditions are on page two.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Estes. Any other? Yes, Mr. Mayor Protim?
One last comment, I don't want to beat a dead horse, Mr. Chair, I did want, but to Councilwoman Miller's point and to the architect's point, we can have requirement for start, it is difficult to place any requirements for finish because of multiple reasons, labor, as he points out, labor market is an issue, weather can be an issue, money could be an issue, you literally could run out of money, you can't find them for that, but there is a recourse, which is if the, if the project, for instance, were to start and not be finished, we can condemn the property at that point, if it's, if it's left as an eyesore or if there's hazardous conditions because it's an incomplete construction site, so, so we do have some recourse on the backside, but it's not, not directly related to timing, so, that'd be conditions of the property, so, just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other? Moving forward. If there are no others, then I make a motion that we approve item 23-254 with the staff recommended conditions of the approval of the exemption plat and of the DOT approved driveway on Fairburn Road. Make a motion to approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis, it's been properly moved and seconded, moved by the Chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Councilmember Davis to approve item 23-254 with the stipulations that are recommended by staff, the two stipulations, we've had hearty disinformation and conversation, I'm not going to say discord, so if any other comments or concerns as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the item with the special stipulations, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, 23-254 is unanimously approved with the stipulations that are presented. Thank you, Mr. Sisk, and thank you, Mr. Thompson, engineer of the city.
Thank you all. Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under planning and development.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate you moving this committee forward and getting these items taken care of with all the weather complications we're having. We'll move on then to item 13, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is number 15 on the agenda, and that is Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, item A, adopting ordinance to amend Chapter 10 of the City of Douglasville Code Act, ordinance to add license classification and to exempt additional license classification from distant requirements and the purpose of correction grammatical and use area. Ms. Hampton or Ms. Reed, whichever one?
Yes, sir, Mr. Councilman Davis, Mr. Chair, the ordinance before you is one that we've had detailed discussion on Thursday during your council committee meetings. If you have additional questions regarding the information within the ordinance, Ms. Jordan will be happy to answer those questions for you, but we have not made any changes since your last discussion.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, any questions? Ms. Jordan?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Watts, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just was curious, I know this was mentioned a couple of weeks ago, but has, has there been any discussion with either the school or the church that might be within the 300, 600? I know that this ordinance changes that, but are they, have they had a chance to respond or do we...
They don't have any concerns.
They don't have any concerns?
And they have not came out.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Madam Mayor, if not, I'd like to make a motion to approve 23-259.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second? Thank you, Councilmember Dr. Burdanley, it's been properly moved and seconded by the Chair, Councilman Davis, and seconded by Councilmember Dr. Burdanley to approve item 23-259. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? I know we've talked about this for several weeks now, getting our downtown together. Thank you, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, 23-259 is unanimously approved.
Okay, moving right along to item B.
Uh huh.
Refer to the Planning Commission. Refer to the Planning Commission, they propose amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding alcohol use classification. Ms. Jordan?
Good evening, Councilman Davis, Council. There have been no updates to this particular item since we last discussed it on Thursday evening, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Council?
Councilman Davis, just, they were doing, it's the micro, these are more definitions and delineating all those other that accompany the item before this one, item A.
Correct, this is just to identify the business types that are allowed to operate after this is passed.
Okay. Thank you so much, Attorney Jordan, thank you, Councilman Davis.
Okay, if there are no... Okay, if there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve twenty-three dash two sixty.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved and seconded, moved by the Chair, Councilmember Samuel Davis, and seconded by Councilmember Estes to approve item twenty-three dash two sixty. Do we have any additional comments, concerns, questions? Any heartburn about this issue from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-three dash two sixty is unanimously approved.
Sorry to have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis, Mr. Chairman, and our City Manager and Attorney Miranda Jordan for helping us. We'll move on then to item sixteen, which is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item. Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement for planning services with Los and Associates, Inc., DBA, Los Design for Planning Services for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And Mr. Bass will address this.
Chris Bass, eight thirty, we're on the first person here. This is the education of public agencies across the country seeking approval in terms of agreement with Los and Associates for development of our first recreation system master plan. This item was presented on Thursday and we have to answer any questions that you may have on this item.
Mr. Bass, just real quick, they've worked for us before. Could you just remind me and anybody else what they've worked on?
Yes, sir. So this is the firm that actually did our master plan that was proven adopted in twenty eighteen. This firm has a lot of resources in Spanish around the country. There's plans here locally with Cobb County, our system master plan is out in the city of Douglasville. And some other master plan to take plans with Douglasville Parks. So one of their biggest clients of Parks is this.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Any questions? Madam Mayor, I see you clicking your mic down there. You got anything?
No, I'm just excited.
Okay. Anybody else? Like to make a motion to approve item twenty-three dash two five six.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved and seconded, moved by Councilmember Watts and seconded by Councilmember Adams to approve item twenty-three dash two fifty-six. Do we have any comments, concerns, questions about this item? Exciting. I don't see anyone's hands. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-three dash two fifty-six is unanimously approved. Is that all you have, Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we had. And I'd just like to thank Mr. Bass for his report Thursday night. I missed that, but thank you.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Coach. We appreciate that. And thank you, our Parks Director, Mr. Bass. So we'll move on then to item seventeen, which is Technology Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is absolutely no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Really? Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No business.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm. Any other business to come before this body from the elected officials? I'm sure we'll probably have an announcement, but other than, it's raining now, but we do have a Fourth of July parade tomorrow. It starts at ten AM. I think people are supposed to line up like at eight thirty to nine o'clock. It's an annual, I don't know how many years. Someone has to tell me how many years we've had it. All the twenty-eight years I've been here, we've had Fourth of July. You know, Councilman Adams, or?
I've been coming over sixty.
For real? Wow, that's a long time.
Hard to believe by age.
There's a joke in there, but I'm not going to make that.
They're not, they're not making any jokes. Councilman Davis? You said fifty? Okay, I'm not being an auctioneer, fifty here, sixty, dah 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 dah. But we're excited about the annual Independence Parade. It's on Church Street. And so that's the only announcement that I have. We're excited about that. Hopefully, it'll take place. And if we're rained out, it says rain or shine, but if it is pouring down rain like it is now, I don't know how we'll, City Manager, could you address that for us?
Rain or shine.
So if it's raining, we still going to have a parade?
Depends on how much rain. If it's pouring like this, it'll be canceled because of threat of inclement weather. But if it's drizzling, we've walked in the rain.
All right now, okay.
I'd be on the fire truck.
Yeah, so the elected officials could be on the fire truck. Okay, so we'll move on then. If we don't have any other announcements or business from the elected officials, we'll move to updates from our city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
My only update is that the Weather Channel app says thirty percent chance at ten AM tomorrow.
Okay, that's not bad, thirty percent.
But it also has a sunshine next to it.
I know. The sun is going to break through. Thank you so much. We appreciate the update. You're being a meteorologist. So move on. Our Chief of Police, Chief Sparks.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Really? How was your conference, Chief? You chief downed it with the FBI, GBI, somebody? It was good? FBI?
It was a good conference. And we talked about the gang data system that the state is going to get ready to employ.
Mm-hmm.
And we talked about some leadership, some leadership situation where for the law enforcement and for the city government. So we had a good leadership class.
Good.
And they talked about social media.
Mm-hmm.
Getting on there. So it's a good class.
Good, Chief. We missed you and we're happy that you're back. You're spoiling us now. We think every time you come back from someplace, you're supposed to have hardware. So we'll just see. You always get these awards, but welcome back. So we'll move on after our chief to our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Just please mark your calendars. Due to the mileage rate public hearing, we're going to have to start committee meetings at four thirty on the thirteenth. Four thirty, so your mileage rate public hearing will start at five thirty. So in order to get our items together, we'll have to start a little bit early. And then lastly, just appreciate, thank you all for giving us an opportunity to promote some individuals on staff and creating a pipeline for, for future promotions internally within local government. I think that as much as it may be unique that we have a female leadership, I think it's even more unique that in a city manager role that we create a pipeline internally within the organization. So that's probably more unique than anything. And that is a privilege. So it's one of the things, I get to do a lot of fun things, but I think one of the most humbling things I get to do is to allow people to create space within their career and make certain that they have career fulfillment. So that's a big deal to me. Thank you all for allowing, giving me the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, City Manager. We appreciate that you open up for growth within. It helps morale and it shows that you are not insecure or intimidated by power, people around you. Just, it's a great thing, so thank you. So we'll move on now to comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to talk to us about anything germane to the City of Douglasville. Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am, Councilwoman.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carl Carey. I'm in five-two-three-two, President Crossman Ray, Cary, Douglasville.
Uh huh.
In March, I brought to the council's attention that my recycling receptacle had been moved. Once I got this coming garbage collection agency that the receptacle has slipped in the garbage truck that it would not be placed. I really wish the council that my immediate neighbors and houses in my surrounding neighborhood all have recycling receptacles. My question was, so why am I being singled out? I asked for assistance and opinion of a recycling container, but I have yet to receive a lock from anyone. So now my difficult question is, would someone on the council explain to me what this form is for, if not to resolve issues? Or is it just a form for citizens to pick?
Thank you so much, Ms. Carey. We will follow.
We'll follow up, yes, ma'am.
Okay, we apologize. Thank you so much for coming out in this weather and hopefully, we can have a resolution to your concern. This is not just to vent, it's to get things done. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Cassandra Bolar. I'm with Uplifting Relationships. I'm at five-two-six-four Brook Hollow Drive in Douglasville, Georgia. My family has been citizens here for over hundreds of years. A proclamation was just signed in my grandmother's name. She was a hundred and four and passed away last month. And so I just wanted to let you all know an announcement that we're doing here in Douglasville with Uplifting Relationships. We are hosting a marriage conference called the Mission-Minded Marriage Conference right here at the Douglasville Conference Center. We will have other mental health providers there. I'm also a psychology professor at West Georgia in Carrollton as well. And it's an opportunity to uplift marriages in the community. At the end, we will also have a gala. And so we, as we know, strong communities are built by strong families. And we want to provide resources for families to do just that. And so it's going to be held here on September thirtieth, and we are looking for sponsors to support this work. Not only will you be supporting families here in the area, you'll also be supporting the Douglasville Conference Center. And I was also married here as well. So I'm all about keeping it here in Douglasville. But just wanted to let you know that. The conference website is upliftingconferences.com. And we will, you know, be doing a lot of work there, but we won't just leave the couples there with an amazing event. We're going to do follow-up services to support them in their marriages and their families as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. We appreciate you bringing that information to us and supporting our conference center in local economy. Do we have any other comments from citizens and delegates?